Teach a specific way. They've even taken some of the classics out that we learned as kids. And I'm not sure where all of this got implemented or how we fell asleep here at Tea Party, but we let it slip through. And I think we need to wake up and make sure that we can make the changes with whatever's necessary in Common Core.
I agree that Common Core is abomination, but you know, here's the thing, folks. These are the same people that put warning labels on french fries. I mean, really? They're not fapping if you don't swallow, by the way. No, I just think, you know, we need to go local, stay local. And I have friends who are educators, and yeah, they lament the fact that they could use, in some cases, the parenting could be better, but yeah, their hands are ice-tied, and I'm opposed to that.
Well, I agree with what Lottman said here. I think where it gets down to it, that citizens need to go to the school boards. And that's where they need to take us to. The supervisors have nothing to do with actually schools. We support the schools, we try to do what we can, but actually, it needs to be taken to the school boards, and that's where it needs to be attacked, right on the ground floor, right at the schools.
So, John, this one's for you. Are you concerned about the increase in police overreach and violence when it comes to dealing with the public? And what, if anything, will you do to stop it?
Well, this is a... Unfortunately, a lot of times, the situations where this does happen, it gets a lot of publicity. I don't care what organization you have, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's doctors, whether it's attorneys, you're going to have good apples and you're going to have bad apples. What we need to do is identify who those bad apples are and have the tools to be able to get rid of them.
This question's for all of you. Let me make the statement. I don't write the questions, I've never seen the questions. It says, "Do you support Sutter County as a rural agricultural county, or do you support Uba City expanding their sphere of influence and replacing orchards with pack-and-stack housing and walkable communities?"
Sounds like a loaded question to Uba City, but you know, I definitely don't support pack-and-stack housing. And I do support growth that's well-planned, and as we already talked about, with the sphere of influence that's been planned by people for many, many years. And I think we should continue to work along the lines of well-planned growth and development that way.
Well, in fairness, Uba City has to handle the housing because Sutter County basically handed it out when they signed the reciprocal tax agreement. Again, my point about Uba City is they have no reason to be expanding right now. They can't handle what they have. In terms of, if they don't get their pension situation under control, Uba City will be bankrupt in three divided years because they have such a high percentage of employees who are safety, fire, and police, and the situation's so bad, they need to focus on that, or there won't be a city to cover it.
I highly support agriculture with the Farm Bureau. I'm a Farm Bureau member also. We've already given the sphere to Uba City. That's up to the Uba City to plan, that's up to the citizens of Uba City to wipe those people if they don't like what they do. But Sutter County, we have no business out there developing because we don't have sewer or water. And so, it's really basically up in the city to do all the planning for the growth.
Well, that's a question that I love, because I'm very passionate about protecting agriculture, just like not putting those solar panels out there and reaching out farther in their sphere of influence. I think about the sphere of influence, and I don't want to see the city grow any further out there. It's fine within the sphere of influence. I look at all the empty lots that are in the sphere of influence. Everybody you can think about, how many empty lots are within the sphere of influence? There's a huge amount of them. I could make a list and think about it. There's no reason for us to go outside of the sphere of influence. There's plenty of lots, plenty of open space for any businesses to come in there and to open up and to be close to us within the city to operate and to serve our community. Thank you. Well, as Larry mentioned, the sphere of influence, the reason that that is put in place is because the city is the one that provides the services such as sewer, water, and streetlights and that type of thing. And so, they need to be able to plan for the growth and where it's going to happen and when it does happen, what it's going to look like. As far as stack-and-pack housing in this region, I don't think we're going to see that in our lifetimes because there's way too much land still that is there to be developed, and the cost of land is cheap. If we were in San Francisco, you'd be looking at high rises. We're not in San Francisco, we're not in Sacramento. So, when we look at the sphere of influence, that's what it's there for. It says, "This is where you put your residential development and your business development because you have the infrastructure to be able to supply the water, the sewer, and all of those things that they need to operate."
This question is for Rick. What experience do you have to convince voters you are qualified to represent Sutter County citizens?
I definitely have a political gene. I ran for the State House in North Dakota 40 years ago. As I've said earlier, it's easy to run for office when you're 21 because when you're 21, you know everything. But I've always felt that I was a man of the people. I do have to give this disclaimer, I ran as a Democrat, but forgive me, I'm 21-years-old. Since then, I became an independent and now I'm registered as a Republican. But I think both of the parties have let us down. I think that as a country, we need to get back to being a forward-looking people, people that look down the road. And my qualifications are, I'm a fighter. I'm sorry, John, but I had the right to fight in any station. I was darn proud that we beat it, and I was 2-1. And as far as the situation with the police, should have been a provision where if the last domino didn't fall, the 82% wasn't met, there should have been a provision to where you could have fulfilled the promise that you made to the people in the whole administration. Like I said, I'm a fighter, I'm not backing down.
This question's for all of you. What is your position on medical marijuana grows in your district and in county? Mr. Munger.
That's a great one, I'm very proud of what he's talking about, I'm against it. We have a lot of grows actually in Meridian and Sutter, and a lot of them post the school. Many of them, there are just not one or two plants in the backyard. There are hundreds of plants in the backyard. We've got pictures of little kids running around the plants with the resident with a pistol on their side. Very dangerous situation. And this next year is going to be a real year for us to test it and find out, and it's going to be pretty much complaining, I'm pretty much against marijuana grows.
Okay, medical marijuana. I think that it's been abused by the doctors that have given these people medical marijuana cards that really don't need it. The people, once they get the cards, they're marked for life, you know? I'm against it growing it outside the house. There's some people that it does help. I don't know. I don't use it. But I think that it's wrong for it to grow outside their property where other people have to smell it. Actually, I walked the district, and this one guy says that he's growing it, he has a little room, and it's got a charcoal filter and all that, and he says that it helps him. Who am I to say that it doesn't help them? But I think it's wrong if they're growing it outside and somebody has to smell it. People are jumping over the fence, and there's problems, you know? People robbing of people, coming with guns, it's wrong, you know? So, you know, it's a hard thing to say, maybe some people need it, but I think it's being abused, you know? Thank you.
Well, I'm with Larry. I'm proud to say that I was the only person on the city council who voted against the marijuana ordinance for a couple of reasons. One, is we tell our children that drugs are bad, but yet it's okay to grow marijuana. I don't think we should be sending mixed messages to our kids. Number two is it's like planting gold bars in your backyard. You're going to want to protect those gold bars, and usually do that with a gun. If somebody wants to steal those gold bars from you, and they'll do it with a gun. And we don't need that kind of activity in our community. We don't allow people to grow their own Vicodin, so why should we allow people to grow marijuana? If it's something that is truly good for them, it should be available at a pharmacy just like any other prescription drug.
Very good, John. You quoted me from the last event. Excellent. I thought that Vicodin marijuana was pretty well. That was a direct quote. John has an excellent memory, so that's good. It's no... As I mentioned, at the last forum, you know, I've walked hundreds of houses in the district and spoken to people about the marijuana issue. It comes up a lot, and it's a crazy issue. I mean, you hear from the federal government, if it's illegal, the state, if it's illegal, if it's medicinal. And you know, my thought is too, if it's medicinal, then you know, you don't grow Vicodin in the backyard, like I mentioned, and why would you grow marijuana in the backyard? And I think it causes a lot of problems. From what I've heard, people in the district, they talk about the smell of the lot, and I guess it smells really bad. We don't have anybody around our house that grows it, but it smells really bad. And I think also, it brings a criminal element to the area, and it's not worth having.
Try following that. I read recently that Canada, they're growing, they have medicinal marijuana, but they're having commercial growth of it. They have companies that grow it, and that eliminates the problem of people abusing it, right? So, I would be all for us to have commercial people take it over, and that way, we'd eliminate the problem. But if it is legalized, it needs to be taxed to death because Lord knows the state, county, we all need the money. So, if people want it, if they need it, they have a medical card, it's taxed.
Okay, this question is for all of you. I finally got one. But I think that Paul gave it to me because... We'll start with, let's see, we started with Larry last time, or we started with Mike, right? Okay, so this question is, we'll start with John. How long have you lived in Sutter County?
Well, it's an easy question. I moved here in 1999.
Dan?
Originally, I came here in 1986. Is that right, Dad? Check it. Eighty-seven, okay. I moved here in 1987, and then moved out of town, and then came back with my lovely wife after I met her in Ohio, and moved here in 1997. And that is when we purchased our first business in Sutter County, and that was Archer Personnel and Staffing, and then we were able to grow that business really well. And then, from there, we sold that business and then purchased Cambridge Career College ever since. And we have two children. My daughter is 14 and the son is 12-years-old. Jessica goes to Uba City High School, and she's an honker this year, she's a freshman. And Nathan goes to Faith Christian, and he's in sixth grade, and he's a basketball player. And I'm actually depending on him for my pension.
How long have you lived in Sutter County?
Okay, I was wondering why Dan's answer was so long. I moved here... I'm sorry, I moved here in November 1991. And thank you for the laughter, folks. I think it's wonderful that we can have fun while we're conducting political business. That's a very important thing.
I've been in Sutter County all my life, 67 years.
Wow, that's hard to beat. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, I can't beat that. But I tell you what, this is my home. This is my home. I've made so many friends here in this area. I came here, and my mom and dad came here in 99. It was about the year that it snowed. And I came from the Bay Area. I was born in Oakland, then went to San Leandro and Hayward I grew up. And my mom and dad came up here, I felt bad for them leaving me, and I came up and looked around, and I went to the Waffle Barn and sat out at the counter there, enjoyed the people there. And I came here full-time in 2014. I bought my first property in 2002, and I was coming back and forth, 2002 to 2004, you know, part-time, and then made it my home in 2004. But this is my home. I can look here and see the people here that are my friends, and the ground, the farmland around it. I can see that this is my home. I do love it here. Thank you.
And this question's for Dan only. What is your position on increasing the local sales tax to reduce county budget deficits?
I'm against taxes. I'm a businessman, and I'm telling you, this is, what is this, April 22nd? This April has been rough, and I'm totally against any type of tax. I'll fight taxes as much as I can. I just can't even really expand upon that, on that, any more than that.
This question is for Rick. How will you address the condition of the homeless in Sutter County?
You know, it's a very good question because I have actually worked with a lot of homeless people. I think the best thing we could do is help improve the economy because there are a lot of people who are living in the river bottoms. A lot of them have drug and alcohol issues, but there are some who are hard-working, skilled workmen, and there's just no work. And if we could get some work for them, any way, shape, or form, while I do not feel it's government's job to create jobs, I would do everything I could as supervisor to make sure those people were given a chance to have a purpose and have something positive in their lives. Other than that, I think maybe we need to reduce the stigma. And I understand that when you look at a homeless person, it's a little unnerving because I think a lot of us with the economic situation, a lot of people feel that they're just one paycheck and one missed mortgage payment away from being homeless themselves. So, if you get a chance to work with some of those homeless, I think they're just human beings, just like you and I.
This question's for Mr. Munger. With the current state budget issues and the direct impact on the county's budget, what cuts would you make to maintain a balanced budget?
Basically, like I said before, last year, we consolidated some departments. If I come down to it again this year, we consolidate more departments and get rid of actually upper people. And so, that's what we did last year, we consolidated within the Community Services Department, and we look at another department to do the same thing.
Next question is for Mike. Do you support or oppose reduction of county building and impact fees to stimulate economic development?
Well, that's too easy. Fees are way too high. You know, I was a contractor, I had a license in every town, and the cost of permits and everything. Of course, I would reduce fees to generate building permits and streamline building permits. Yes, I would. Do whatever I could.
This question's for John Deuce. Please give a synopsis of the First Amendment and explain how important it is to the American society.
That's always fun to remember your history here. First Amendment, I'm going to need some help on this one. Freedom of speech, thank you. I think if you look at that amendment, it gave each of us the right to speak and redress against government. I think it has been taken way too far from the standpoint that people are, burning a flag is freedom of speech. I have trouble with that because I respect the flag. But when we talk about somebody standing on the street corner that's panhandling and begging from people for money, that they have the right to free speech to do that, I disagree. To me, that's vagrancy. And we don't, I don't think that vagrancy is something that we should support in our city. Free speech, if I have something to say against government, I should have every right to say that. But I think it needs to be fine-tuned to what that free speech means.
This question is for all of you, starting with Dan. What should be done concerning illegal immigrants in Sutter County?
I think we have laws, and if the state and the federal government would just follow the laws for legal immigration, then we probably wouldn't have a problem with legal immigration overall. So, I think if we just enforce the laws in place, we'd be much better off.
Illegal immigration, what part of illegal don't we understand? I think the problem is that if we allow some people to break the law, then it's a question of why, or the rest of us follow the law. It's a very slippery slope that you fall into. I'm not bitter because there, I think some illegals did take my job, or they might say "yup." But you know, it's just the fact that if it's illegal, it needs to be stopped, and if we can do anything to enforce the law, I think we should.
I think Dan hit it right on the head. If it's illegal, it's illegal. What the state needs to do, and federal, we need to have visiting, people can come here from like Mexico and work on our farms because you're not going to get too many of the white people that go out there and do the labor these people do. Our laws need to be changed, they need to have the visitation, come in here, keep track of them, and it's that way they can go back home. But if they come here and have children, then they're residents, I mean, they're citizens of the United States. So, it's a major problem that we're facing in California.
Boy, that's a hot issue, illegal immigration. I feel sorry for anybody that doesn't have a chance, but I do feel sorry for the American people, that their kids don't have a chance to succeed, and their jobs are taken away. There's not enough jobs here now, and there's people coming in this country and taking American jobs. So, I think Americans are first, number one, you know? My dad fought for this country, my grandfather fought for this country. They're not protecting my generation or natives here. So, follow the law, you know, follow the law. And I'm okay if that's what they want to do, is a work permit, you know, that they track them, they have some identification, a work permit. But it'd be nice, you know, to see, you know, white people. Actually, my ancestors came across from Iowa, and they stopped in a farm my grandmother had to pick with five grandkids, and they picked from the farm. So, it's, white people pick too. You heard the Grapes of Wrath, I know that. So, it's just now somebody else is doing the work. Thank you. Well, I think... I think Dan said it right. Number one, it's a federal law, and it's a state law. As a county, really, all we can do is enforce what those laws are, that we are, you know, empowered to enforce those laws. Do we need to have a farm worker visa program? I believe we do because there are a lot of those jobs, even though Mike says that they're taking those jobs from other people, there's a lot of those jobs that our people won't do. And so, we need a program to help our farmers also, but it needs to be a farm worker visa program. But we need to enforce the laws that we have. Thank you.
Okay, this is a question from the audience, and it concerns SECOG. What is your position on staying in or getting out of the Sacramento-area Council of Governments? Who did we start with? This is for all of you.
It started with me last time.
Okay, we'll start with Rick.
We have this question that the Realtors meeting had last Thursday. I would be for getting out of SECOG. I don't think the regionalism has helped us. I think we need to focus on taking care of ourselves. If the monies are, if their money's attached to it, then those monies need to be given to us directly. I don't think we need to have SECOG breathing over our shoulders.
Because it's something that's been discussed between Uba County, Sutter County, and Buick County. But we've got our fair share, it depends on who's down there in your county. They've got to be a leader down in SECOG to be able to bring this money back. We have got our fair share on Highway 99 and some of the bridge projects, and I believe the bridge project here in Uba City is getting some SECOG money. So, they are larger, but if we get our share out of it, I don't have a problem with it. But if we can put together a good consortium with Uba County and Buick County and Sutter County, maybe somebody else, it would be all right with me.
Well, SECOG, from what I understand, it's only in California. And you know, SECOG is controlling our county, and I heard there's other counties out there that have their own COGS. And we could form our own, you know, and go from there and have our own representation. So, by having Sacramento control it, we have no representation, you know? They're controlling our thoughts and running everything their way. I want to look more into it, and I'd like to go through their SECOGs and see how they run it, and it's possible that we could start our own. Entertain that idea. Thank you. Well, SECOG is a regional planning mechanism for our highways. And it is important, again, this is the way the state givens up the money that goes for regional transportation. And it is important that the counties work together between Sacramento and Placer and Yolo and Uba and Sutter Counties so that we can plan how our highway dollars are spent. The state doles it out in large amounts of money, and they want the regions to plan the growth for their regions and how they want the highways to interconnect. So, it is the way that the state has set this up, and I do support the way it is currently. Thank you.
I just started hearing this idea of forming our own COG, and it sounds like an interesting idea, and I think it's something worth definitely exploring. But I do know too, that through SECOG, it depends on the representation that we send. And I know that recently, we sent some pretty strong representation to SECOG, and we've had some very good results. So, like it or not, we have received the benefit of about over $100 million in the last several years to this area with the roads and things. So, I'd want to know, before we go out and form our own COG, which I'm not opposed to, I think it could end up being just a good or better idea even, to make sure that we get funded the same way, and it works out well for us the same way it is. I think that depends a lot on our representation on that board from us locally.
Dan, this question's for you from the audience. What is the source of the grants your business receives? Are they government grants?
So, this is a direct question for my business, but no, my business does not receive any direct subsidies from the government. Cambridge College, we're different than a traditional community college, as a community college receives direct subsidies for them. Our students are able to obtain financial aid, and then they can choose, if they wish to choose, financial aid, and then they can choose which college to attend if they want to attend, whichever college they want to attend, it's their choice. That's all.
This question is for you, John, from the audience. How serious are you with your campaign for supervisor in District 3? The reason is that I haven't seen any campaign signage or pamphlets about your campaign. How serious are you?
Well, I'm here tonight, and I've been to all the forums, I'm very serious about it. It's about timing. There will be signs.
This question's for Larry Munger. How did you get us into the pension mess, being a businessman?
Really, the whole state's in a mess, and so is everybody. But at that time, we were losing a lot of people going in. Uba City had passed the pension plan, and we had a revolving door training people one after another. It was either giving them a health benefit that they wanted, which I'm glad we didn't go with the health benefits, the way the health benefits have gone. It was giving them full 100% benefits or going to the 2.7. So, our choice was going with the 2.7 to try to stop the revolving doors with our employees and our sheriff department. We were losing them to Sacramento County, Uba City, Placer County, and we were just a training camp. It was costing us more money to train than it was actually to give them a raise.
This question is for all of you, and since I don't know where we left off when we started bouncing around, we'll just start randomly. Pardon? Rick's the next one? Okay. And it is for all of you. Would you still run for this position if there weren't any benefits or salary? If elected, would you be willing to refuse or recuse yourself from salary, pension, and benefits? Are you willing to sign the waiver today?
That's a great question. Running for office and serving the public should never be about the money. But since we have had a policy in the last 10 years of providing our supervisors with, it's over $50,000 a year, folks, it's a lot of money. I would be for easing off... I would be for easing off on that, but I will pledge to you that I will be a full-time supervisor. The problems that have been created by what I think are lax policies by our board in the last 10 years are going to require a lot of effort. But if I had to do it for no money, I would still do it for no money.
Right, Rick, a little bit, it's not over 50, it's about 34, 35,000 dollars. But if you add some benefits into your health benefits, it might come up to that point, but you pay your share of it also. Would I, no, you know, actually, if you knew how many donations that I make in a year, I do a lot of them on the present, but everybody looks at me because I'm supervisor, and they want a prize, or they want you to go to a dinner. When you look at the end of the check, the end of the month, there's not a whole lot left of it by the time you attend everything. So you're going to have to be subsidized somewhere or another to attend all these different items.
Question is, would I do it for the money? Well, truth is, no. You have to, you have to pay me to do the job, of course. I'm financially okay, I'm not doing it to get the paycheck. But if I'm going to go to work, yes, I want to get paid, because I want to work hard for that check. I want to work hard for the people of Sutter County, you know? I see other elected oppositions pay way beyond $35,000, you know? And definitely, if you elect me, I'm going to earn it. It's not a freebie, I'm going to earn every penny of it, and I promise to do my best and give you all that I have. Thank you.
Well, I would simply say that if you're not going to pay your supervisors to represent you, then you will probably get what you're paying them. And so I think it's important that the supervisors get a reasonable wage for what they do and the time. As Larry mentioned, it's, you think that we just go to a council meeting or a board of supervisors meetings, but I literally will spend probably anywhere from 20 to 30 hours a week doing different things on boards and commissions and different community activities. There's a lot of time that puts into it, and I would submit that not any of you in this room would put in the time that we put in for nothing.